So I guess we're here we are, our post summer meeting.
This is it, isn't it?
This is, this is everybody and uh Well, good, I'm glad to see everybody here. Um, I guess I will, we'll call to order. Uh, I hope, I hope the rain, I, I don't think the rain's supposed to be very bad, although I just heard a rumble and the way things have been, we could get
That's not what Wayne just told us. Wayne said, you know, hold on to your britches.
Yeah, well, he, he might be right. I don't know, so.
I'm gonna turn at 5:30. I have, uh, gonna have a tornado warning, I think.
Yeah.
5:30?
Um, well, let's hope, let's hope that that doesn't develop. Uh, so anyway, um, so we, we, all of us who are uh, on the board are here. Um, and I just wanted to announce, you all might, might have already known this, but Richie Berman um, has resigned his spot on the board. Um, I guess he and Suzie have moved to Woodbury and
Yes.
Um, so he's, I'm, I'm not sure if he's planning on, uh, I assume he's gonna invest his efforts over there and uh, hopefully, you know, and avoid the long drive over to here.
Yeah.
But, but I don't know.
I, I hope we see him and Suzie. They're, they're such special people.
Yeah, they are. We'll miss them.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I mean, not just on, I mean, certainly not just on this board, you know, just, but in
No, just the nicest, loveliest people.
You know, Richie did a lot. Uh, I know that. And um, I did drop him a note thanking him, uh, from me, but if we wanted to, um, maybe some point put together a card and we can pass it around and send it to him or, you know, whatever you guys think, but um, you know, he was in the board for a number of years and he was a very effective, engaged, engaged member. So, you know, we'll, we'll, maybe we'll coordinate something with that. Um, but I guess next onto us is, is, did everyone have a chance to look over the minutes from the last meeting?
Yeah.
Yes.
So, so um, can I get a, a move to uh, vote to approve the minutes of that meeting?
I move to approve.
My second.
Okay, all in favor of approving those minutes for the June fourth meeting?
Aye.
Aye.
I think it's two.
You're good.
Oh, okay. So I think we passed. Um, uh, so the, I looked through um uh, Linda's regular reports, did, did, did um, the director's report, I mean, did you guys all have a chance to do that beforehand?
Yes, I did.
Yes.
Yes.
Um, anybody have any questions or comments?
No.
None.
I have a couple, but uh, uh, one of, one of the questions that I had was, sounds, sounds great that uh, how Zoom is kind of getting leveraged more and more. Um, and, and, you know, I was curious, you know, how many, how many folks I see, unfortunately yoga hasn't been able to move, but it looks like everything else uh, is, is utilizing Zoom and being able to continue some level of programming that's being engaged by folks and Linda, is that I mean, that's up to date and, and you feel that's, that's going pretty well?
Yes, I, I've, um, as I said, I, I've just been delighted with the success of Zoom. Um, and uh, the willingness, the openness that people have had to, to learn the news, this new technology. And um, actually Geraldine and I were just talking a few minutes ago um, about writing a grant, trying to get tablets for seniors in town who may not have uh, computer access right now. Um, and not to get them big computers, but iPads or um, Microsoft uh, books that um, that they can utilize and, and uh, there's a community um, Connecticut Community, Community Foundation, their, their deadline is October 5th. So, we're thinking of working on, on trying to get that. It's, it's a wonderful, it's a wonderful way to um, to communicate with others and, and try to stay together while we are apart. Um, it's, it's hard to know. I, I will confess, I, I do not know what is gonna be approved uh, for us here. Um, we have yet to meet Barbara's way. Uh, I know it's a, a high priority for her, but we have not yet met. So, um, um, we did get the guidance that uh, senior centers could resume operations. But it's, oh my goodness, it's so many restrictions. Um, it's, it's hard to, it's hard to imagine um, how it is going to be successful. Um, and the reality is, is that not everyone is ready to come back. Um, so we, we may be looking at perhaps an approach where we will ask our instructors to offer um, in-person classes and also classes on Zoom. Um, just to keep everybody at a place where they're, they're feeling comfortable.
Will, will the, I think one of the first thing I would want to ask is, and I'd like to get back to the, to the thing about the iPads too in a minute, but about the instructors, are they, are they all comfortable?
Yeah.
And, and teaching, I mean, you know, it's kind of like the school systems, uh, you know, it's, 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 it's wonderful if the students want to come or the families of students want them to come, but if the people that are sort of the center of, the hub of it are not, we might have some issues there. Have you talked to any of them about that?
Yes, I, actually I have, I've, I've spoken to um, all of our regular instructors. Um, and they're very, they've been great. I, I just, you know, I can't say enough good things. Um, our aerobics instructor, she is delightful. She's not all that com- comfortable with the technology, but boy, she has embraced it and um, she, of all of, of, of everyone, I mean, she's, she's tried doing them outside where she has more room. She's realized that the sound quality of the music that she plays was, was difficult to also then, because she's giving instructions while the music is playing and it was, it was difficult. And, and one rainy day, she came inside and she um, she looked at her house and she rearranged some furniture and um, uh, she's, she's been very happy with the results. It's, it's uh, which Aaron knows from aerobics, that the quality of the um, you know, getting the, the music and the instructions right uh, has been a little bit of a challenge.
Yeah, it hasn't been, it hasn't been perfect because, you know, it cuts out a little bit, but Laura has certainly done an excellent job of accommodating and, and fitting everything in.
Yeah, she's, she's just a delight. She's, she's been with us for what, about 10 years? She's been a delight. And, and Amanda, Amanda is much more, um, she's our zumba instructor, she's much more Tex-avy. Um, and um, she finally figured out that, you know, working from her basement seemed best with a house full of pets who were very curious in what was going on. And um, uh, so she teaches, uh, she teaches from her basement, but she's also very willing to come back to the center, but also very willing to also do a, a Zoom, you know, a Zoom class as well. So, um, um, yoga has been a challenge. Yoga has been a challenge and um, uh, I, I think I am finally to a point where I have, may have enough people to do a chair yoga class. Um, and I, I will have to talk to our instructor about how she feels about doing that on on Zoom. Uh, she did a, on an outstanding workshop for us. Uh, she's got a um, an interesting background. Um, but she did a really wonderful workshop for us and it was on Zoom. And I thought it went extremely well. Um, you know, it may not be everybody's um, favorite thing. Uh, it's grown on me. I mean, I was, I was, boy, I was terrified and thank goodness for Julie. You know, the first day we had our first class, I was a nervous girl. I just, I was so, I wanted everybody to have such a good experience. I didn't want to have any problems. And I asked Julie if she would sign on and it was great because there were people who were having issues signing on. And the phone was ringing and it was such a joy to have Julie there to help people while I was helping people on the phone. So, um, and that was all it took, you know? It really took that one, that one difficult day. And um, you know, we've got, uh, so I've been very pleased about that. I've been, you know, that has, has worked well. I've used it a lot because it's basically all I have to offer right now. Virtual programming, unless it's something that I have found that, like I've had a lot of interest in this AARP. Um, um, Monday's Mystic that I, that I put on, uh, I put into the um, September newsletter, uh, that was recommended to me. Uh, so, um, but I'm finding that I'm not getting much of a response to just, you know, visiting museums or whatever. So, so people seem to be responding to the programs and the programs that we've been able to have. I can't even tell you how good the um, the Land Trust program was outstanding. It was really outstanding.
What, what kind of audiences are you kind of getting for these?
Well, the, the interesting thing is that um, for the Land Trust especially, uh, there were, there were a lot of new faces. Um, Roxbury Chats has brought in some new people, people we, we don't usually see. So it's been, in, in that regard, it's also, it's been a, it's been a positive thing. So, um, I, I would like to see some more people join in on Roxbury Chats. And we, we had a chat today and we were talking about um, uh, the fact that we would like to perhaps see if more people will join us. And there's, oh!
That's Gracie.
Sharon Cat has joined the meeting. So, um,
Right, but Gracie doesn't get a vote.
Oh, but um, but we uh, um, but we're going to be inviting some, some people to join our chats and, and uh, we're gonna see how that goes. And uh, as always, we seem to be still, you know, working this through day by day and um, seeing what works and what doesn't work and uh, and doing our very best for, for the seniors. And I am concerned, I will share. Um, I think it, it's not been quite as difficult for people with um, you know, from spring and going into a summer where you can go outside and you can walk in your yard or you can sit outside. Um, I'm, I'm a little more concerned about um, a sense of isolation and, and um, uh, a sense of loneliness, that's, that's a potential problem or a concern really uh, as we're heading into the fall and the winter. So, um, I, I don't know that, you know, I'm always open to ideas, so.
I think, I think that's a big thing about what you were talking about in terms of getting, trying to get some devices in people's hands who don't have them and to sort of have a, figure out an easy way for them to access some of the programming you do have. Because I'm sure there's something of a, you know, the digital divide that people talk a lot about. You know, but among our community that we serve, probably, you know, we're all on computers and we all have access to them. But there's probably a, a, a number, I don't know what it would be, but there's probably a number of people that cannot be involved in this sort of thing, um, who need it, um, because they just don't have access or confidence in being able to, you know, uh, navigate, navigate this technology.
Right. Well, that or they have devices that are old and not updated.
Yeah.
Can't participate.
Yeah, that may work for their, their, their purposes. The one thing I, I really, really um, like about Zoom. And, and I found out quite, quite honestly, because I, Zoom was kind of new to me. I mean, I attended meetings, sure.
It was new to everybody six months ago.
I'm good for my children, that's all I can say. Um, but I, I think that one of the nicest things that I discovered was that um, I was having trouble uh, attending a meeting um, uh, in town. And I ended up calling in and I could call in and I could participate. I could hear everything that was going on in the meeting and I could participate from my telephone. So it's a nice option if, if people are interested and um,
Well, I could explain to people. I think, I think we can't assume that everybody understands what Zoom is just through some sort of osmosis, you know? A lot of us have been drawn into it for professional reasons and for other reasons that maybe some people aren't necessarily even drawn into it. I mean, just the idea that you say, no, you can call into a number. I mean, how, how comfortable is that for someone who, who's used to their whole life being on telephones, uh, but, but, you know, whereas, you know, this is obviously got more bells than whistles.
Yeah.
Um, you know, it's something that you should probably promote when you say, we have a Zoom meeting. Show the link and, you know, underline or somehow highlight the phone-in part of it for people to, you know, and maybe say that in your newsletter, you know, you, you can, you don't need a computer to be a part of Zoom.
Well,
Come to a Zoom meeting.
That, so I have to do a better job of saying that. Um,
Well, I'm using the iPhone right now because my computers are down.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, no, exactly. I mean, even getting, I mean, Wayne, even having your picture on it is a little bit higher level of understanding of the, of, of the technology, but I mean, even somebody with a dial-up phone could be hearing what's going on in a meeting, you know?
And, and
And everybody's got that.
Yeah. I think there's, um, at least for me, I, I just find it such a joy to be able to look, you know, see you all. I find that's, that's a joy, you know, and, and trying to share that good news with, with everyone. Um, because I think people have missed seeing each other and I think there's, um, you know, from my perspective, to see someone and see them looking well, um, is, is, is wonderful.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, I mean, I, I, I absolutely encourage you to go after that that grant, you know, I mean, it's, it, it could be the kind of thing, I don't know, where we get, we could possibly get 10, eight or whatever number of devices that would probably make a very big impact on a number of people. And, you know, perhaps we can work out something with Bill Chin to, to, you know, do some private, if he's comfortable in doing it, to just do some quick training for some people or to train somebody to train other people or, or, or something like that. I, I know it wouldn't be that big a training, but they'd need to have the time. You know, some, again, people don't just pick things up from osmosis.
Yeah. No, that's, that's what we had thought, to start with 10 and um, include some instruction time. Build that into the grant request.
We all need to come up with a criteria for people to apply to get one. Or how, have you thought about that?
Yeah, we'll have to, whether there's a we will, we'll.
Let's, let's first see if, you know, if it moves forward.
Yeah.
And then maybe Linda, i- if Barbara does approve it, why don't you see if she could provide you with whatever they perhaps use in the school district for the criteria for giving computers to kids that don't have them, I, you know, or some guidance. There might be some, some guidance that already exists that we could just sort of shape to our need.
Yes. Yeah.
But, but, you know, it could, particularly coming into winter, because I, I, A, I agree with what you're saying about the winter being a difficult time for some people, especially, you know, for some people especially, but, but it's a difficult time in general. Um, and if we can help kind of open some things up for there. I also personally think that um, at some point in the winter, we're gonna get shop closed up again. And the, you know, sort of the better we are at delivering this kind of um, uh, service and interaction and relief or whatever we want to call it. You know, the whole package, I mean, you know, what we do.
Well, at the beginning of the uh, shutdown, I think there were a number of people that we were servicing that never came to the senior center for meals and shopping and maybe those are the people that we should get the pads out too because they're kind of shut in and uh, they don't come to the senior center, so it might be an outreach program.
Yeah.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Yeah. We certainly, we certainly want
Couple people that we brought meals to that never come to the senior center.
Yeah. Hmm. Hmm. Yeah, I mean, it's too bad, I'm almost, you know, if we can get the grant, I wonder if, could, could we do something where we did a fundraiser to try to get a matching amount of money? Um, uh, and double, and double the impact?
Well, um,
Well, might be something that could go into the appeal letter from the friends too.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, you know, you know, unfortunately, sometimes with that kind of thing, if you put it in with the friends appeal, you'll get the same total amount of money, but 2,000 of it will be earmarked for the, for the computers and you get 2,000 less for the, for the programming. Um, but let's cross that bridge when we come to it, Mike.
Yeah.
My cynicism will, will abate by that time. Um, but yeah, and the whole idea that we're seeing new faces, it's, it's um, you know, I mean, I think there's some surprise things that are happening during this pandemic as well, you know, and I, and I think that Linda, you're embracing, you're embracing of the Zoom and of the, these kinds of um, uh, of opportunities is, is kind of the brave new world right now. And I think you've done a great job in, in getting people going. I think, you know, the only thing, of course, that's gonna happen is, is if more people are willing to do it, you know, you could have volunteers running some things that don't necessarily have to run completely through, you know, you every time. So, um, you know, almost like, like if people wanted to get in their own soapbox. You know, speaker's corner, I don't know. You know, but, but I, I just think, again, any opportunities we can come up with for, let's just call it programming, to engage people with, as we get into the winter, would probably be a good thing.
I just have a comment on the, the visiting nurse service and vaccines.
Yes.
Uh, is it possible also, instead of, also beside the high dose uh, flu vaccine to have a pneumonia vaccine?
Um, I will check, Wayne. I'm not sure that that's available through them, but I, I will check. Um,
Currently more people are dying from pneumonia than, than from COVID.
Mm-hmm.
There are more deaths being reported from pneumonia than the COVID.
Okay. Well, I will certainly um, be in contact with the VNA and, and uh, see what, what might be available. They've been very, very, very accommodating. Um, I called today, we have a, a legally blind gentleman um, who normally comes to us for um, his flu shot. And uh, we were talking about, you know, the way we're going to be doing it this year. And, you know, just trying to um, talk through, you know, what his plan of action would be. And I called the VNA and um, and they were wonderful. They, um, they said that they were making calls in the area this, this very afternoon and would stop by and make sure that he got his flu shot. So, um,
Yeah, we just had the visiting nurse here, so.
Yeah, it might have been the same one.
Are they gonna give them up at the center, Linda?
Excuse me?
Are they gonna give flu shots up at the center like usual?
Actually, it's going to be different. Um,
But they're gonna give them
The, the VNA is going to do uh, flu shots. They will have the high dose, the senior dose. Um, and um, they're gonna be done um, as a drive-through. They're going to set up a tent and I'm gonna be sending out the consent form. Um, that's basically a registration form with all of the personal information. And um, people will complete it. It will go out in the October newsletter with all the information about the um, uh, the day. And people are used to having two days, there'll only be one. Um, and it will be uh, Thursday, October the 15th, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And people will need to have their completed form. They will not be any contact in terms of, normally I take their insurance card or their Medicare card and I make a copy of it for the nurses. And um, we keep it going like that, but um, this year, all that will happen is people will be asked to be responsible for completing their form correctly. And um, it is, uh, the, the vaccine is covered by Medicare Part B, so every senior has, should have access to it. So, um, uh, of course, everyone, again, you know, everyone, uh, I spoke to someone the other day who had, who had uh, asked about it before I was able to finalize the plan with the VNA. And um, you know, they opted to get their shots when they were um, shopping and, and stopped in somewhere where the flu vaccine was available. So, um, you know, everyone does their, their own thing. And uh, but we are offering, and, but just one. We usually offer two, but it will just be one. And it will be all done in um, the senior center parking lot. And hopefully it'll go well.
Linda, you, you say here, you'll be doing it at the parking lot entrance? I mean, just to be clear, it, it's not really gonna be a drive-through, but also, I would assume we want to have people park and have somebody walk up to them and take the shot, then back out and leave?
No, no. Actually, I, I hoped, I, I put in that it would be in the senior center parking lot, not the entrance. So people will be entering the senior center lot. And the uh, tent, the VNA is planning to set up their tent um, inside the lot. So people will come in and they will turn around and then they will leave. So, um, uh, Barbara and I spoke about perhaps having cones out or um, perhaps if a
Perfect job.
Sir was available that day, it would probably be a good idea just to, you know.
It might be good to ask either a state trooper or something, what would be the way to best have, you know, the circle you're talking about be done, because when I look at what, when I'm hearing what you're saying, you're gonna have people having to drive off over into the handicap spaces around the tent and, you know, and I, I don't know how much room you've got. And I'm sure you're
Pretty big lot.
Waiting for space with this people at the school parking lot.
It's a pretty big lot. I, I really want to avoid having, you know, a, a long line of people on South Street. So I'm encouraging that we use the entire lot and people come into the lot and uh, um, you know.
When you say the entire lot, are you talking about the, you're not, you're just talking about the area adjacent to the senior center?
No, the entire lot, the entire lot.
How will you do that? Is the school out that day? Don't they take up a lot of spaces in the
It's the town's lot.
Pardon?
So it's the town's lot. If we need, this, the school doesn't seem to be using um, the, the, the town lot. So, um, I'm not anticipating it being a problem though. And the VNA is not, so, um,
Maybe because it's so closed off this year, the lot's not being used so much by parents and other people. But I always seem to remember there being
Yeah.
A lot of people in that lot, a lot of people sometimes parking in our lot.
No, that has been a problem over the years and it's been something that I've worked with the principal over there on. Now, that has been a problem over the years and it's been something that I've worked with the principal over there on. And she's been very, very cooperative. And, and we will just make sure that, you know, they are aware that, that no one will be able to park in this lot on Thursday, October the 15th, I think we can.
So will the shots be administered in the tent or are the nurses coming up to the car?
Nurses will come up to the cars.
Okay.
But they'll be staged in the tent, that's what the tent's there for, right?
Right.
Okay, so if there's a couple that is coming, they will take care of both of them?
Yes.
Right?
Please put your car in park.
So I would.
They will walk around it.
I would suggest that maybe in the newsletter that they wear something that is easily wiggled out of or.
I know.
Whatever, so.
I know, it, it amazes me every year, because some people come with their short sleeves and some people come layered up and it takes them five minutes to get undressed and then five minutes to get dressed and took somebody else's jacket. I mean, we're gonna miss all that fun.
Well, hopefully, hopefully it's a warm day, you know?
I hope so.
We'll have other kinds of fun, Linda.
But also, on the soup side, do you? All right, so from what I understood, the plan would be a person would order their soup and what, they would come to the door and you would hand them their?
No, we don't want, we don't want people to come to the door. We want people to remain in their cars and and, and just pick up their food that will be in bags. And, and then just, again, circle around and leave.
Will they call when they arrive, so you know they're there?
No, it's, if you don't mind, we had a meeting about it yesterday.
Yes, I know, Mary Ann held a meeting.
It's gonna be 12 to 1:30 in half hour segments. And they're gonna make it so they'll call Mary Ann, make a reservation or email her and then they'll come at their, their slot.
How does the soup get from the kitchen into that person's hand?
The, the cooks are gonna cook it, they're gonna wrap it, put it in a bag with the person's name on it. And then there's a rolling cart that we use up there. They're gonna put the bags on the cart and then the servers will take the bag and take it out to the car. We're gonna have a basket, a basket for them to put the money in, so we don't have to handle the money. And we'll hand them their lunch and they'll put their money in the basket.
Okay, great.
Yeah, sounds pretty good.
Yeah, 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 I just was curious, do, do, does a volunteer deliver to them or do they?
No.
Lot outside of the building? And if it was outside of the building, I was only gonna ask if we had a pop-up tent.
No, we, we really, we talked about it and, and our conclusion was that for concern of, of social distancing, it was gonna, it, there was a potential for being a problem. So we figured out a way to just avoid, avoid any problem at all.
Yep, keep them in their car. And, and again, you'll, you'll be very clear with them, in order to pick up their stuff, they must be wearing a mask?
Yes, yes, and the same thing with their flu shots. The nurses will not provide a shot without someone wearing a mask.
But, but, but in some regards, it's easier for a nurse to say, no, or here, I'll give you a mask and you go do that and they'll put it on and come back in a little while or something. Whereas for, for one of our volunteers, that's the more difficult proposition for them to ask if they get to a car and suddenly the person doesn't have a mask.
Well, I, I would think that at this point, you know, the.
Yeah, let's just be specific about it, that's all.
Yeah, I mean, it, it certainly is someone's option, you know, we can't make.
No, 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 that's why I disagree. If they don't want to wear a mask, they don't have to get their soup.
Right, right, exactly.
Yeah, okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Exactly, and the same way is if they don't want to wear a mask, they don't have to get a shot.
Right.
You know, I mean, we're, we're, the evidence is, is clear and, and at this point, you know, we're going with the science on this.
Well, well, not, I don't know, you know, we could all debate and it changes all the time about what evidence we have. It's the only real option we've got.
Right.
Let's just be really honest about it and it's, and it's the one thing that may, in fact, be working to some extent. So, so, you know, that's, that seems to be more the issue in my mind.
Yeah.
So I have a comment about the soup to go. And you probably have already thought about this, Sharon, is when people make their reservation, it'd probably be a good idea to get the color and make of their car.
Oh, what a good idea.
So that you're looking, you know, you're not running up and down the parking lot looking for someone.
Right, and of course, license plate.
Well, that, but color is really important, I think.
Yeah, 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 no, I agree, it'll make it faster, without a doubt.
Yeah.
Well, we could add that in.
Yeah.
When I was in Rhode Island, every restaurant you went into took your phone number.
Yeah.
You know, for social, for, for tracking.
Well, you know, I think most of the curbside that I have encountered is you call when you get there and then.
They run it out, right?
They run it out, so.
Yeah.
Well, this was sit, sit down, it was sit down.
Yeah. Yeah.
Interesting places, we're doing it different ways.
Oh, okay.
So, so Linda, I haven't heard yet from Barbara, I heard something earlier, but then I hadn't heard anything. So thank you for including this in, because that also informs me that apparently we're gonna have some conversation at some point soon.
Yes, I hope so. I mean, I know, I know Barbara has been in contact and this is a very high priority for her, so we certainly will be having a conversation. I, I'm assuming it will be next week.
Okay. Okay, well, if you hear something from her, let me know, I'm sure she'll let me know too, but let's just be in coordinated coordination.
Right, oh no, it's, it's really important.
And, and then, you know, we'll, we'll, I think some of the details on that, we'll just hopefully be able to report to the group at our meeting in October.
Yeah.
Any other, it looks great on the buildings and ground side of things. I'm sure, you know, we're waiting with bated breath for the exhaust system to be cleaned.
Excuse me? What am I missing that?
The exhaust system, the kitchen exhaust.
Oh, yes, my goodness.
But, but great to hear that the generator's in good shape, especially.
Well, the, the exhaust system, that's a fire code violation, so that's really important, we gotta get that done.
No, no, that's, that's programmed. Anybody else, anything on this? Okay, and again, I think that we should, you know, we should recognize that, that if things start improving now, they might go downhill a little bit later on. I mean, I think we should be, be hoping for the best, but maybe expecting the worst. So I, you know, I strongly recommend we continue to explore Zoom and other options through it, because I think it's, you know, it is a really valuable tool for providing people with what we, we are trying to provide during this time.
Yeah.
And Lily, you've done, really kudos to you for embracing it and, and, you know, getting it into your quiver and hopefully it'll, it'll expand and people will step forward perhaps to even help you out with, with some of the programming you want to do.
Well, thank you, Bill.
So, I mean, essentially, to me, that, as far as the COVID-19 update, that's somewhat what you put in your, in your report, is there any other que, do, do you agree, Linda? I mean, that's what you meant with that, is just where we stand on, on this, the town's COVID-19 situation?
Yeah, I mean, I think that, you know, we, the final decision will be Barbara's. And the guidance did come out. As I said, lots of restrictions, a lot of restrictions. And I held a, a meeting here when, when Suzette and Mary Ann and Peggy and Russo came to talk about the soup to go. It's amazing how far a distance six feet is, you know? And, and there we were, and we were in our masks and, and you know, I always thought that we had pretty, you know, good sized rooms. And those rooms really shrink when you start putting chairs six feet apart. So, no, it, it, it will be a challenge, it will be a challenge. But one that I'm certainly eager to try to, to work on and find some way, find some way to, you know, to meet the needs of our community.
As for the friends, is there any report from the friends? Do we have any news?
I have not been to a friends meeting, so I can't report on that.
Oh, well, I think they're hard at work and, you know, certainly Peggy has been delightful to work with on this concept of the soup to go. I think the friends are considering, they, they did cancel their holiday festival. I think you all were aware of that at the last meeting. But I think they're thinking of other, I know they're considering a point, doing a point set of sale. And again, just trying to understand what they're going to be able to do in terms of use of the building. So those are still questions that are yet to be answered.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Okay, good. Our, love to move on to new business. Like I said, I, I, I don't know, is, is there anything else, Linda, that you could offer on the COVID-19 update beyond what we've really just covered? Or does anybody else have any comments concerning it?
I, I don't quite know what, you know, I mean.
Although, on our new, on our new business piece of our agenda, we say COVID-19 update.
Yeah.
And I think we just had it.
Yeah, yeah. It's.
Well, I'd also say that as far as the seniors are concerned, anybody over the age of 65 or in a nursing home or they're the most vulnerable. And I brought up the pneumonia vaccine, because most comorbidity factors associated with death is people don't have a pneumonia vaccine. Ninety-nine percent of the people that get the COVID, if they have it, are asymptomatic and have no problems. But it's the people above 70 and non-nuemonia vaccinated people have a very difficult time.
Yeah. Well, whether the COVID's around, whether it's COVID era or any other time, pneumonia is a tremendous killer of people in this age group, you know?
Well.
Been for a long time for a reason.
The Hilltop in New Milford, they've had about eight to 10 deaths from COVID. And they, at one time, I think, not 80% of the beds had positive testing.
Yeah. 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 The, yeah, Linda, if you could, if you could look into that, that would be great. There, there, you know, I had gotten that shot last year because my doctor had, had, you know, encouraged it because it's a, it's a, you know, it's, they might be a little shaky without a, without a doctor because it covers about seven different types of pneumonia.
Yeah, I just got one last month, so.
Yeah.
Good for you.
Most prophylactic vaccines are covered under Medicare.
Yeah, I think, I think the other thing that I was not aware of when I got my pneumonia shot last year was that I will need a booster this year, so, you know, and I will get it.
I'll have to go ask my doctor about it, well, I'm seeing him in a month, hopefully he'll remind me.
Well, getting people to get vaccinated is another problem.
If we could provide that or somehow, you know, whether it's on this go-round or at another time, you know, that's a big thing to look into.
No, I agree, I think, I think it's a wonderful point and I will certainly look into it.
Most people, well, to get people get vaccinated, about 35% of the people are not vaccinated.
Yeah, well.
And they still have this hang-up on vaccines.
Well, you know, there was a, there was a, after years and years and years of it being almost totally eradicated, measles has come back because people think somehow there's something wrong with that vaccine and it does other things to you that, who knows?
Well, there was a tuberculosis.
Unfortunately, people believe what they want to believe.
Yeah. There was a tuberculosis outbreak in, in Connecticut at the same time we're talking about COVID.
Yeah, I was talking to somebody about that earlier today. That it's unbelievable that, you know, I mean, that, that's, that's, that's a tremendous story when you think about the, the fact that we had basically gotten polio under control and tuberculosis under control within about 10 years of, of each other. After years of them, of course, being all over the place and, and, you know, being very common. And, you know, that's almost as worrisome that there's been outbreaks of tuberculosis than there is, you know, in some regards worse than COVID. Because tuberculosis is, is, you know, has already been, has already been an epidemic that's run through this country and the world.
I think that this whole thing is, just makes everybody hypersensitive to communicable diseases that we have.
Yeah. Well, it's bad to see, it's bad to see ones we thought were dead come back. And tuberculosis being two of them. You know, so, but yeah, let's continue to do what we have to do, at least to keep avoiding this particular strain of problem. So on the mask policy, I, I, I just asked if we put this on, on the agenda because I just wanted to be clear that, you know, we state it clearly in the, in the newsletter and that people will, you know, will, will be asked, will, will not, we will not be able to provide services to people that don't comply. I think that's something we should be clear about and if, you know, if any, I think we should have, you know, whether it's signs, make, you know, make sure we have the signs made. I'm, I'm certain the, the state is very specific about what you can or can't do, but, but I just think among ourselves, if we're talking to people, we should be very clear that unless there's a board, we don't agree with that, that non-compliance basically means non, we can't deal with you.
Right.
Is it possible for us to have some of the disposable masks on hand in case someone just forgot?
No, exactly, Tori. And so I was told, oh, they're very expensive, Linda, they're very expensive. So you know me, I don't get discouraged. So I said, okay, well, then maybe we'll see if one of the seniors who has been making masks, and I, may I show you? We have beautiful crafted masks. Me, myself and I, I, I use the disposable ones, but it's, we, we certainly have, Holly Stark made four dozen for us and Wagner has offered to make more whenever we need them. So we certainly have, and, and, and I think also the disposable ones are, have certainly come down in price from, and, and are certainly more available.
You can get them on Amazon for practically nothing.
Yeah.
The. I just, you know, I think it's, we need to consider the people that are, you know, they've come all the way down and they go, oh, forgot my mask.
That's right, no, no, absolutely, no, we, 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 we want to do everything that we can to help our seniors. We wanted, you know, we don't want to make things difficult for people. And, and I'm, you know, I've got a supply, they do me no good in my drawer. We want to distribute them to people. Geraldine had, Geraldine has been seeing people by appointment in the building. And of course, masks are a requirement. And there was one senior who, I don't know, her mask was looking awful tired. So we sent her home of a, a good supply of masks and, and, and that's, you know, that's what we're all about here.
Would, 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 can you use part of your discretionary budget to buy a hundred, a hundred disposable masks?
I was told I could not. I was told I could not. But hopefully, you know, I don't know. Um, I was told I could not.
By whom?
By, by our town treasurer.
Okay. Okay. Do you mind if I bring that up in conversation at our meeting next week?
Not not at all, Bill. I mean, no, I mean, it it was very early on. Um, I think that um um, you know, I I just think it's important to be able to.
Yeah, yeah. I I agree. I I don't know about the cloth ones because the cloth ones frankly create some other problems because if you don't wash them with some regularity, they they're bad. Um, but 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 to get somebody through the, you know, the line or um uh, you know, to give them a disposable one is is certainly a a good option as well.
Right. No, that I agree with you. And and again, that that meeting and when I was told that was very early on in the process and there may be some some rethinking about that. So I'm.
The purpose of the mask is to prevent you from expectorating on somebody. Purpose of the mask is not to prevent you from getting a virus.
Right.
Unless you dispose the mask each wearing. And people don't do that.
Yeah.
They they use the same mask over and over again. So they touch the outside and they touch, which defeats the purpose of getting virus into you. It's only to prevent you from getting droplets out in the atmosphere.
Right, right. It's a substitute for what people used to do, which was cover their mouth when they cough.
Right, right.
But also to breathe, breathe heavily or whatever. But but yeah, I I think I I think we all you know, recognize it by wearing a mask, we're not really protecting ourselves. But um, but we are protecting everybody else, which is if everybody did that, then, you know, we wouldn't have a big a problem.
Right.
So but I do think that having masks on hand to distribute should be, you know, something that we make sure we can do. And and however that is done is is great. But I do think that if somebody, you know, because we've it it you've seen it in in different areas. If somebody refuses to comply with it, we just, we do have to, I believe, have a hard line on that. And because it only puts our um volunteers in jeopardy.
Exactly, exactly.
Linda, I just ordered a hundred of them. I'll call you when they come.
Tori, you are incredible.
We should ask Bridgewater, that fire department has a has a pickup truck full.
Oh, wow.
So when they come, I'll call you and drop them off at the center.
Thank you very much, Tori.
You're welcome.
And then and then I just say we hold off on anything else on this policy because I'm sure we will get something when we have our our meeting with the rest of the town partners on this.
Right, exactly.
So and we'll get back to everybody on that. Um, and then um if any, if I could move on off of B, anybody have any other questions on that? At this moment? Okay, so on the um recruitment note, um, back to what we started the meeting about, we're talking about briefly was uh, losing Richie on the board. Um, you know, at this point, it might be kind of a difficult time to get people to join the board, but maybe we maybe we can have some luck. I think I just wanted to make sure everybody recognized uh, that we are down to four members at the moment. Uh, and, you know, we have five seats. So I'm sure Barbara will be thinking about people to recruit, but also we should be doing the same. Um, and maybe if you come up with somebody and you want to encourage them, um please do and and uh, we can, we can get a fifth person on the board, you know, especially someone that's that's been fairly involved uh, with the community for a while is great, but, you know, new blood is good too. So let's just be on the lookout for uh, good candidates and hopefully before too long, we'll have, we'll have, we'll have a good addition to the group.
I have no ideas.
Yeah, no, no, I I don't, nobody jumps to mind immediately either. I'm sort of just saying it because we should think about it and it would be good to to get somebody on, you know. With Zoom, it doesn't seem like many people will miss meetings, you know. I mean, one of the reasons we we've always had five is because A, it was established that way, but B, in order to have a quorum, we need at least three. And um, you know, sometimes we, depending on the time of year and so forth, we we struggle to get to that place because we physically have to be in a spot. Right now, we're in a condition where maybe even if you're away, I'm away, I could be part of the meeting. Um, uh, you know, for the time it takes. So uh, so in other words, it's a little less of an emergency, but I do think, you know, I do think we want to fill the spot and I think we should be thinking about it because we're the, we'd be the best folks to recruit knowing what we actually do. So uh, any other business?
Not for me.
Okay, great. Um, well, then can I have, would someone make a, make a move to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I second it.
Nobody wants.
Fourth it.
I I do it, but I I'm not supposed to, I believe. Unless there's only two of us at the meeting. Okay, so all in favor of adjournment of this special meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Answering. And uh, all opposed, say nay, and.
There's only four of us.
We'll see, right, we'll see you in, we'll see you in a, we'll see you in probably less than a month. We'll be back to our usual schedule, which I think would be like October, is it October first in in October?
Yeah.
Okay, so hopefully if we have that meeting, we'll have some good news, we'll have some interesting news to share.
All right. And give Lorraine our our best, Wayne.
Oh, yes, please do. Give Lorraine our very best.
Yes.
I'll check and see how she's doing.
Okay, bye bye.
Okay.
Bye.
Hope your washer comes, Sharon.
Yeah, I do too. I guess it's not coming today.
Oh, Sharon.
What time is it going? Must be going to five thirty, right?
Five thirty.
Five thirty.
Five thirty, time for the tornado, so.
Yeah. No washing machine, but a tornado.
Right, you got it.
Okay, bye bye.
Take care.